You become a member of the Friends of the Library. You get the Lunar New Year going with 600 people. You do the doorbelling, you meet your neighbors, you ask them what they need, what they want. You throw the city, you don't stand it still. And you do all the things that people need: safety, convenience, robust business community. You support your businesses. And yes, even though someone may have made this comment a couple of months ago, that no one comes to Newcastle to go to the fruit and produce or the ice cream shop. I got news for you: a lot of people come to Newcastle to visit our businesses. And frankly, they do it because our council has supported businesses for the most part in the last few years. So, what can I say? It's a great city. Our council events, library events, Coal Creek, YMCA, the restaurants, holy cow, there's so much to do here. And now we have Sun. The sun is out, ladies and gentlemen, the sun is out. It's like you've never heard that before, Sun. The sun is shining brightly. Why? Because she is involved, she cares, and she will do the job. She is a leader. She's done all the things I mentioned before. She has a team that is a powerful team, starting with Mayor, who you'll meet in just a minute. Out there in the community, cares about the community, wants to get the job done. Remember, happiness lies in the joy of achievement and the thrill of a creative effort. That is what a city council member is supposed to do. And that is what Sun will do for all of us here in Newcastle. And so, let's bring on the team. You're all part of the team, by the way. And the key with the team is volunteer, donate, and of course, smile all the time. And make people think you're really nice, even if you're not that nice. I'm kidding. So, let me bring up my friend from the 41st Legislative District, representing this town and others at the state level, Milin Tai.
The sun around us. And so, my name is Milin Tai. I have the honor to represent the 41st Legislative District. And Newcastle is a city that I am so honored to represent them as a whole. And the reason why I say that is in the 41st Legislative District, I get half of Bellevue, I get a little bit of Isakua, I get a little bit of Sanamish, and I get a whole of Newcastle. And that is incredibly wonderful. And I also get a whole of Mers Island, but if you know my seatmates, both of them live in Mers Island. So, it's their home. But for me, Newcastle is so, so close to my heart. Because if you, especially those of you who travel here to support Sun, who do not live in Newcastle, our secret is the Safeway Corner. Because in that Safeway Corner, you get the best flower shop, you also get amazing boba tea. And apparently, recently, I heard there's a new coffee shop coming in the space. And right across the street is the amazing Newcastle Library. And so, you literally get everything in a corner, and it's just a wonderful space to be. I would rather drive down to Newcastle from time to time to do my business than down to Victoria. Do not tell Bellevue people that, right, Madam Mayor? And it is such a wonderful, wonderful event like this, to see so many faces in the community. So many faces, especially, so if you would give me a moment to just spill my heart out, to see so many Asian faces. I want you to know, I am so happy to see you support somebody who will truly represent you. So, a little bit about why I support Sun. It's very personal. Sun, I can't say worse, because when you're a teacher, you're a teacher. So, Sun is a teacher for both of my children. And that was how I come to know Sun. And eventually, supporting Sun will become our leader at the local level. And here are the key things of what I know about Sun. She cares, and she cares about everything. It almost to the point, sometime I get like, "Seriously, Sun? Do you sleep? Do you eat?" She care about her students, the one who actually do homework and bring homework in, and the one who don't. So, I have two children. One, does homework and bring them in on time, all the time. And the other one is like, "Ah, do I have to? I think my teacher really like you, Mom, so I'm gonna leverage that." And this teacher would care about them that way. The one who can speak Mandarin from sixth grade to the time they graduate, or elevated, or leaving middle school in eighth grade. And those who still struggle speaking Mandarin. And Sun find different ways so that her students get to enjoy their learning. And Sun find different opportunities for her student across the board to experience the amazing, rich, beautiful Asian culture. Because it's not just the language you're learning, it's the culture you're learning. That is how we can reach over and build that bridge. And everything I just say, from Sun's classroom to the boardroom at the council level, is critically important. Those are the ingredient to make the people who come out opposing you for one reason and another sit down and be able to have a conversation with you. That is the key important of a leader. Sun did that a number of years. And not only that, she is this amazing. She did that as a teacher, she went out, she trained other teachers. She is so generous, because she believe in our communities better, she believe in our next generations better. And she took all of that kindness, generosity, and leadership to another level. So, I am here to wholeheartedly supporting Sun Burford. First of all, as my dear, dear friend. Second of all, as forever, my children, teachers, and for the Asian in the room or in the area. You know, in Asia, culture, teacher is very much your second parent. They guide you through life. Sometime, kids listen to their teachers more than they listen to us parents. True, which United States American public school should take note. Caring about your educators a little bit more. And really, last but not least, Sun live in the community. Sun know her community. So despite how much I want to pull my heart, in this community, I depend on leader like Sun, who helped make that connection, who helped building that bridge. And so, I'm looking at the campaign manager, am I introducing Madam Mayor next? Or the candidate next? Okay, I'm introducing, you want me to introduce, okay, the candidate. I'm gonna like, listen to the candidate. I'm gonna introduce Madam Mayor from the senior Bellevue, who when Sun get elected will be your colleague, and hopefully, you can help support her.
Unique, but I'm gonna try. So, I've been on the council for 10 years, and I can tell you there's a certain skill set that I see that makes people very successful at this job. The first one is being connected to your community. This lady is very connected to her community. She is so involved in so many different ways, and has showed success in pulling groups of people together very successfully, and entertaining everybody around, not just a certain group of people. Really need to have that broad connection. The other thing, you need to be smart, you need to be able to learn on the job. We don't go into this job knowing everything. And so, having that ability to learn, which you have so strongly, and you are so smart, is a great thing to have. The next, the last thing is organization. You have to be very organized, you have to have organized thoughts. You need to make a path for how you're gonna get from here to here, and you've got to stay with it and be tenacious. I know Sun can do that as well. But most importantly, you know, in our job, we don't just represent our friends, we don't just represent our family, or the people that we agree with. We are at large, we represent everybody in the community. And coming from healthcare, this is easy for me, because I don't pick and choose my patients. I don't treat one person less than another person, I give my best with every single person that comes in the door. And I do that as a council member, and as a teacher, even more so. I can't imagine anyone with a better background and experience than Sun for this job. I'm really looking forward to working with her. Thank you for being here to support.
I'm here to advocate myself and to represent you all. As an immigrant, my story represents the American dream. About 25 years ago, I came to this country to pursue higher education, to build my American dream, and to seek a much better life, and to build a family. I'm so fortunate, I found such a community that welcomed me. In this community, my husband Brad and I, they raised our two beautiful and intelligent daughters, Angel and Glory. Glory actually is my Chinese name's English meaning. My Chinese name is Sun Yongfen. Sun, I share the same last name with Art of War master Sun Zhi. I share the same last name with a modern China's founder, Dr. Sun Ya Xie. I share the same last name with this very special Monkey King, who has 22 magic forms and the power. So I always share this with my students. And now, so as a lifelong learner, to pursue my higher education, I studied computer information system, I studied financial accounting, and then I studied human relations, American multiculturalism. And I also had this great opportunity to study leadership at Stanford University. Being a teacher, I also pursued masters in education. I think being a teacher and an organizer and a volunteer in our community, it takes multiple facets of power and strong passion to serve. I deeply care for our city, I love our community. Right now, look around us, such a beautiful place, we are so fortunate. And thank you all for coming to be here, to be in our beautiful city, to support me. And throughout the years, I have volunteered with a lot of local organizations, especially with Newcastle Arts Council, with our support of our president, Ed Flash, our president, such a dedicated leader here. And I also, I've been working as a VP for Friends of Newcastle Library. And my, I admire, at Flash's work, I equally admire our president of Friends of Newcastle Library, Beatrice. Because before coming to this country, in my birth country, I never, never had a dream to run for office. Because pretty much, we went to our American dream is about pursue higher education, for a better life, and family, and children, and career. And as I have been serving, serving in the community, spend my time, and also as a 25-year educator, I have spent all of my life working for, working with people. People from all walks of life, all ages, all different backgrounds, such a diverse group. And I used to be pretty shy, I didn't really talk, you know, friends with so many people, but as a teacher, I have to do it. Especially, I even learned more things, I was willing to learn more things. I think first of all, you have an open mind, you're also a lifelong learner, and you're learning to learn new things. What I learned through the pandemic, I initiated the idea, "Let's organize Newcastle citywide Lunar New Year celebration." The reason why I wanted to do so, because people were isolated, they were disconnected with their neighbors, with their friends, with the entire community. I wanted to do something. So, with my experience, I organized numerous community events before that. That's why I was quite confident I was able to do so. Not like, "Oh, no, okay, I just want to do it." You know, with my base, the foundation, and my experience. So I proposed the idea. I am so grateful to get the support from my Arts Council, leading by Ed Flash, and my backup, my strong supporter, said, "Okay." First of all, they asked the essential question, "So, Sun, what's your vision?" I said, "My vision is to bring people together." And it's been so long, let's celebrate holiday, culture, symbolic food, and meaningful activities to bring people from all ages come together, to celebrate our success, to envision a brighter future, next year and beyond. Just, this Lunar New Year celebration is not just about Asian people. Just about, not just about the people who you think only them, only they celebrate. Surprisingly, we had 150 participants as our target. But I worked really hard, because we never knew how many people will show up. But I did my solid work. I knocked on the door, I talked with every single people I met. I also messaged my neighbors, and I made sure I just need to do my part. I got individual donation of $500, the lady I just met, for a week. And I was so grateful, and we have become such good friends. Also, for my campaign, she also donated $500. So now, back to the Newcastle story and my American journey, we talk the journey to the West. So it's for diversity, for inclusion, for working with everyone, for a better life. We're all human beings, we all share the same common ground. Also, my background, I used to work for the government. But I, what I did, I planned for the city's five and 10-year plan. I wrote the city's plan, five years, 10 years. And I literally interviewed and visited and investigated in a lot of city essential departments and companies, such as roadwork, green belt, gasoline, pipeline, and housing, relocating, working with people. Also, I was hosting press release conference, I was a news reporter and journalist. I was on-spot, live, reporting local, the largest, the third largest city in China for the public project, on-spot. And that really, I'm confident I can do my job, I can work for a brighter Newcastle. It takes a village, I can't do this alone. And as 25-year educator, I will bring a solid skill set of a good listener, and I get work done. I also work with diverse people. Also, I have my vision and my idea to bring people together. But I was very shy to asking, to ask for donation. Literally, because you know I'm a learner, I took a course. I spent money, I took a course, in order to ask how to ask for donation. After that course, immediately, I put it in practice. I got more donation, indeed. And I would like to take this moment to thank each and every one of you to come here. Because it only when you show up, the unity, let's share the common ground, we can get things done. And I would really, really thank my mentor and my inspiration, our 41st State Representative, Milin. Also, she was my Bellevue School District Director, Board Director. Thank you so much. And also, for Lin, you know, we were marching together, do you know the story? We were really, hand by hand, shoulder by shoulder, we were marching for really, really, she really, really showed, so she is such a genuine caring person. And down to earth, as my friend, to care for Chinese, that's an ex solution act, that commemorative date, we were marching twice. And also, as the Bellevue City Council Member, Genius, we were together, and Milin was there. Oh, Genius, thank you so much! Oh my goodness, I'm glad to see you. Thank you. You're in my heart, all the time. And also, I would really, really want to thank our, today, our city council members who are here today to support me. Our current Deputy Mayor, Arianna Sherlock. Thank you. She actually asked me, "You should run, you are, you have such a power to bring people together." I'm so amazed. Also, my, our long-term Newcastle City Council Member, Carol Simpson. Yes, yes.
Don't let her convince, say otherwise, she's pushy.
I learned, I took a lot of courses. Yeah, yeah. And also, I would really, really like to thank our Newcastle Trail Association President. I'm also on the board, you know, Sun is every part, yeah, so. And because, you know what, I hiked Mount St. Helens, this little lady, to the peak. I hiked Camp Mir, very close to the peak, Mount Mir. The reason why not yet, because I'm running for Newcastle Council. I am willing to just pass, and I adore our local trails, our green space, I care for. So thank you, Gary, for your long-time service and dedication to our city, to our community. Thank you. Also, Gary, what about Sun, here's my present, already delivered me this check. Thank you so much. And also, our beautiful Genius from our freaking first, and today, to support me. And my, you know. So, her husband just gave a beautiful concert, you know, the Chinese musician, but the engineer. You can believe, engineer, so people from community, it takes a village. Also, I want to acknowledge Newcastle Activity Commission, Nathan, and his wife, Lisa, longtime volunteer for our Arts Council and our library, Newcastle Library. I want to thank you. And also, Holly, Holly Zhang, Holly Zhang, my dear friend. And she is the only one, also, I want to thank you. Wendy, $500 check. Oh my goodness, thank you so much. And yes, I'm sure your husband agreed. Also, I just want to, because so many people to really think, uh, thank. Oh, also, very importantly, very special to my heart, our Washington State, our Guangzhou Association, Guangzhou Guangzhou Association. Our loving, loving president, Jimmy Liu, and president, Dr. Ming Xiao. And my neighbor, Alisa, and also our current council member, Chris. Thank you so much for your dedication, thanks so much, and for your support. And our dear neighbor, my next door. I just adore my family, you know, Joe, Alisa, and, ah, also, right? Special, right? Yes, thank you so much, thank you. And for each and every of you, thank you so much. And also, our media. And, oh, do you know, I'm from Tianjin? There are three cities in China, Capital Beijing, Shanghai, and Tianjin. Tianjin means Emperor's Harbor. The family from my hometown, they came here, all the way from China, to support me.
From Woodville, I'm 74, reached out here to support Sun. But I think Sun is in the sky, but she soon, soon is here in our community. I support you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, yeah, so thank you so much. And our youngest ever council member, Paul Sharano, you know, he, Joe, and we knocked on doors, you know. Thank you so much for your dedication, time, and gifts. High five. So now, I just want to wrap up my speech. In Chinese, we say, "The greatest job under the sun is to be a teacher." And, you know, but I think being a teacher is not enough, I can't just protect my students. My students said, "Mrs. Burford, I don't feel safe, because I'm afraid one day someone will kick me, my back, with a big, big rock, because we heard the horrible story." So that's why I want to be on the leadership, to represent each and to represent each and every one of you, to work for every one of you. Thank you so much. Your support is crucial. Your vote is critical. Thank you so much.
Homework on time. I don't turn in my homework on time. But I had Sun Laoshi as a teacher. And when I heard that she was running for Newcastle City Council, I jumped at the chance to help her as her campaign manager. I had her as my middle school Mandarin teacher, and I still have poems from that class memorized. I know, "Genius to Ta Li Bai", the whole thing. I will recite it to you later. Some of the songs. I think it's on. Hello? We can hear you.
Hello?
Okay. Oh yeah, my name is Mira Tai. I haven't done this before. I'm the campaign manager.
Okay.
Even closer? Okay. So I'm here to ask you all, Ian? Wait, Ian, where's Ian? Come, come, come. I'm here to ask you to help Sun. We have a primary. None of the other council members have a primary, which means that the election is on August first and ballots drop on July 12th. Today is July 9th. We have three days until ballot drops to get the word out about Sun's campaign to every single Newcastle resident. So there's a QR code there, and if you scan it, there's a link that will take you to a volunteer page where you can put in your information and we'll have you come knock doors with us. It doesn't matter if it's your first time. We will train you, but we'd love to get people out there knocking on doors, talking to community members, and supporting Sun. Sun is working really hard on this campaign. She's, she's asking for donations. She's been knocking on doors ever since we got her campaign lit out. She's been staying up really late. And she, this woman has the energy of like twenty other people. I don't know how she does it. And she will bring that same work ethic and drive Newcastle City Council. But she needs help. She needs people who will show up to rally with her, show up to every event, show up to knock on doors and talk to neighbors. So I'm asking you to show up for Sun because she will for you. And I would like to introduce Ian Crowley.
Hello. I'm also another former student of Sun, Sun Laoshi. I took Chinese one A, one B at Taiyi. I'd like to thank her for the opportunity to get involved with her campaign. I'm the campaign youth organizer. And for basically, as long as I've been interested in politics and stuff, I've always wanted to get involved in more the activism side of things. I've done, I've been in things like JSA and other clubs and affinity groups at Newport, but I've never really been able to get involved in local politics up until now, when Representative Tai approached me at a Make Us Visible Washington event, which is a great Asian organization. They're planning to get more Asian-American representation in our school curriculum. And she approached me and offered me this opportunity. So I'm very grateful for that. One thing I do remember from my time being Sun Laoshi's student is that she was probably the most animated and energetic teacher at just, at Taiyi, maybe even in the Bellevue School District period. And I really admire that of her. I think we all need to embody that same passion in whatever we're doing in life, whether we're in politics, whether it's our personal life, when we're pursuing our very own personal American dream. I think we all need to take a look at Sun Laoshi's passion, at her energy, and just bring that into our own personal lives. Thank you.
I don't know where she went. Why I would like Sun to be back, Holly? So I talked with Representative Tai about over a year ago, and we had said, okay, do you think there is any way we can get Sun to run for Newcastle City Council? And Sun had been heavily involved in our city, and she had applied to work on a lot of different commissions in our city. And she had been rejected every time. And she rejected because the person who makes the decision on who serves on that commission is our mayor. And every time Sun said the word diversity, it scared our mayor. So I told Sun, I said, Sun, you can't keep one way that we can make sure you don't get rejected from these things. One way we can make sure you get to serve our public is if you file to run. And you can file to run against her because they can't reject you that way. We asked Sun to run because we are, I know there's a lot of new faces to be here. Just quickly about Newcastle. It has not been a very welcoming place politically. I filed to run two years ago. The average age of all seven of our council members at that time was sixty-six years old. We had a lot of folks who were tired, and we had a lot of folks who didn't want anything to change. They were trying to cling to the way certain things were, and they didn't want to embrace the way our community is. And we've done a lot of good work. We got myself elected. I'm the youngest city council member in County. We got our first person of color elected, Councilmember Chris Villasenor. We got a young mom on the council, and Councilmember Arianna Sherlock. But a council is made up of seven people. And I cannot tell you how many times we've been one vote away from doing the things we really want to do. The amount of times we've been one vote away from actually being able to make that change and embrace the new Newcastle. Because we did the work with the state commission on the Asian-American and Pacific Islander Commission for the city of Newcastle, and we're still one vote away. Because we did the work on affordable housing. We've done the work on a lot of these projects, and we're still one vote away. And, and, you know, the reason that I'm willing to give up my weekends to go knock doors with Sun, the reason that I'm willing to go sit down in her house there and work on her literature is because I am tired of being one vote away. Now let me tell you how I won. They did, they tried to say I wasn't qualified. They tried to say I was too young. I knocked, there's two reasons. One, I knocked more doors than everyone else that was running. We've already started Sun doing that. She's already messaging me and emailing me at midnight saying, who will knock doors with me? So I guarantee you, there's not an issue there. And the other reason is because despite, in a field with candidates from T-Mobile, candidates from tech, the twenty-four-year-old out-fundraised them. And that's how you win. You knock on doors and you get the resources to contact voters. Because people don't know about city council races. People don't know what's going on unless we can communicate to them. So I have three jobs. Two of them pay me less than minimum wage. One is from the city of Newcastle. One is from the Rent School District, and I've already given to Sun. I'm gonna give to Sun again today. And every time I give to someone and donate something politically, I think of the idea of giving up going out to eat one night. And I cannot tell you how many, how long I would give up going out to eat if it meant we could get Sun elected. Because we could do so much for the community that could make such a difference. And I want the people who have the values that will elevate their former student and support them, that will elevate their own children and support them, that will elevate the people around them and bring them in with them. Because we have not had that in Newcastle. I cannot tell you how nice that would be to have in Newcastle. And I cannot tell you how much good we'd be able to do. So there are a couple ways to donate. There is a QR code on the literature. Is there another QR code that's coming around?
Mira's.
Folks will be coming around with a way to donate. Do not leave here today without giving. I've given once, I'm going to give again. I'm serious. That's what it takes to get it done. It's nice that we can show up and support Sun right now, show up to knock on doors, show up right now to give her dollars. Because when we take someone from our community that teaches our children, we don't ask them to contribute their own money when they're already contributing their own time to give back to our community. I believe that, I believe you all believe that. And I, we need Sun in our community. We need Sun in our elected leaders.
August first, like Sun, or in the general election in November. I have really loved working with Sun and everyone here in Newcastle. I grew up in China Creek myself and then on May Valley Road. So I'm a former Newcastle resident. My mom, I think, is somewhere in the crowd. She's a renter here in Newcastle still. So making sure that there's positive change in Newcastle is still very, very important to me. So I just want to close out by saying, thank you all. Make sure you sign up to volunteer. Come see Mira. We've got the QR code for donations. And I hope to be seeing you on the campaign trail. Let's go.
Supporting her because she has the common sense how to lead the city, how to make a better place for all of us. And I think that's what we want. We want people with a common sense to rule the city and give us a better place to live. And I hope that Sun can make it. And I'm so happy that she willing to give her time and efforts to make this community a better place to live. Thank you for being here and support Sun because she is a common sense lady. Thank you.